Is his ability to know when, when to allow someone to come in and help. Like, he trusted me to coach with him. And when we were working with just the girls team, he trusted me to kind of take care of the girls in ways that he couldn't, maybe, if that makes sense. Like, if they had a problem or an issue, he would kind of look at me like, okay, so how should we handle this? And then I would take care of it. And it felt so amazing for me to be able to be part of the team in the way that I could take care of something for him. I could help him in that way because I knew how hard he was working. You know, every day, every night, he just poured his heart and his soul into how he was going to make the team better, what new strategies we were going to take, if the workouts were good or if they needed to be tweaked. And then, so for me to kind of put my expertise as a woman into helping these young women athletes, and he trusted me with that, was, was really, it was really special that he trusted me because of how, how much I respect him and how much I loved working with him and how much the program meant to him and to me.
Guys.
It is.
Hi.
Hi, Coach.
You need, you want that on Jacqueline?
Oh, no, I don't do that.
Jacqueline, yeah, put it on these girls.
Put it on, he says.
Peace. You want to hold this?
I will hold it.
Coach, here, I'll get on camera a little bit. Do you, are you changing clothes?
No, I'm not going to change. I just got.
This is hot.
Yep.
I just got the whole thing.
You'll be my assistant.
Oh, I will.
It's 5 o'clock. I call the Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, December 16th, 2024. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Boshin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here. Take a moment to remind trustees to speak into the mics, please. Thank you. Item 3, approval of December 2nd, 2024 Village Board meeting minutes, if correct, and corrections of mistakes, if any. Tim and Amanda, we have motion in a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me. Motion carries. Item 4A, item, oath of office and swearing in for Police Officer Nicholas Vassen.
All right, so just to briefly talk to you about Nicholas. Nick, if you want to have a seat up there. So Nick applied with our department some time ago. And what brought him to Oregon was, and you, I'm sure you remember, recently promoted Jordan Coulson to sergeant. He knows Nick quite well. Heard he had been interested in law enforcement, so immediately reached out, talked to him about who we are as a police department and the great community we serve. And here we are, right? Both panels, so he went through extensive interviewing with a Sergeant FTO panel and then an administrative panel. Both panels easily agreed. He seemed like a really great fit, very humble, honest, kind. And the background that we conducted of him showed he's a very hardworking young man. So from there, we, at the approval of the Police Commission, gave him a final offer of employment after he checked all the necessary boxes. And, turn this off, sorry. It's tripping in my ear. So you'll see a date as I give him his oath of July 31st, 2024. So we do have to do an informal oath of office before they start the academy to be official through training and standards. And so we did that. And he went through the Police Academy at Blackhawk Tech in Janesville and did very well. And just recently, I graduated, or I graduated, I attended his graduation. And we're very proud of him getting through the academy. It's a lot. They put you through a lot of hard work. So with that said, are you ready to be officially sworn in, Nick?
Jenny. I think this is working. Thank you.
I, Nicholas W. Vassen, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Nicholas Vassen, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of July 31st, 2024.
I will assume my duties as of July 31st, 2024.
Thanks, Jenny.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, without objection, I'm going to jump to item 10C, which is a library director report, clean energy incentive payment for library geothermal.
And that's on 244 of your packet, in case you're wondering. So just wanted to take this chance to celebrate some good news. It's always great to share good things with the village board. And I have Kathy from the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change here with us tonight to celebrate this with us. So the good news is that the village received a clean energy incentive of $489,000. That's $489,000, which is incredible for the library's geothermal system. So as you may remember, back in 2022, the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, was passed, which provides incentives for clean energy, including solar and geothermal, among other initiatives. Unfortunately, includes local governments as one of the eligible entities. So around the same time, village board members, past and present, made a decision to support the library by providing an additional $600,000 to make sure that the library could include the geothermal system and then also some solar panels as well. So we really appreciate the village board making that important decision at that time and are excited to be able to report back that the majority of that funding has been offset by this wonderful initiative. And so just want to say thank you to the village board for having the foresight to make that decision. And now that we're able to both have that clean energy in our facilities, but also to have this incentive to be able to use for other things for the village to offset that cost. So just wanted to say thank you to the village board for doing that and just make sure you were aware of that good news. And Kathy, just wanted to say a few words. She's been super helpful in helping us get this incentive for the village.
Thanks so much, Jennifer, and congratulations, guys. Okay, you were the, so, okay, I don't know. It's something in the water out here. But so far, there are two elective paychecks that we're aware of in the state of Wisconsin. Yours and the Oregon School District. Like, I have a lot of people in cities and villages waiting for their checks, including us at the county, but, yeah. So you did something right. It's nicer penmanship, or I don't know. This is, this is such a huge deal, though. You got $489,000. And that's before you get the credit for your solar. You're going to get more credit next year. You're going to be able to say you got more than half a million dollars back. And so you built a library with these amazing systems. It's going to cost less to operate and be more comfortable for decades to come. Hooray. You got much of the money you invested in that back that you can use for other projects. And you're going to inspire a bunch of other communities. Because, trust me, as we start saying that you got a check for $489,000, there are going to be a lot of local governments going, well, where's our check? Why aren't we thinking about solar or geothermal at some facility? So really, this is a huge deal. So grateful for your leadership on this. As, you know, it's not easy to approve those higher costs for the building, but I really think you're going to be glad about this for decades to come. And just congratulations and, like, I've been saying to Jennifer, this is a huge deal. You need to show off. And one of the things I'm going to keep saying to her is I think there should be like a poster or something up in the library about all the money the village got back for this. Because these systems are invisible to your constituents. And you want to think about, how do you, again, that's how you make these things more contagious. And so, hooray, thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership. And congratulations on the huge check.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, 4B is next public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, this agenda item allows the board to receive information and to ask questions of representative facilitator about understanding of the information. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. However, board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. 15 minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. We have registered to speak Mary Davidson. State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Mary Davidson, 323 South Main Street, here in Oregon. I sure wish I had a check to give to you for $89,000.
Do you want to pull the microphone just a little closer?
Closer, yeah. First, I wanted to thank Martin for your memorandums, for your memos that go with the packet. Oh, my gosh, they make such a difference to, you know, a non-government kind of person, reading that through and getting a little bit more of an explanation. I really do appreciate that. But in reading everything about, what did I write down there, 8A tonight and the referendum and, you know, I filled out my form too. And I thought, man, if I could afford it, I would have gone with the biggest dollar amount possible. It's just, just because that's how much living and formerly working in this community at the library, you know, that's how much this community means to me. But, but I can't manage that. And I looked at the results of that and it looked like there were a lot of people that didn't feel they could manage that. So my thought was, in the view of that, I'm hoping that in the year to come, you take a look at some of the items that you've got in the 10-year, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, because maybe there's some shuffling that could be done on there to lessen the pain on the residents. And I know, working with Jennifer and past directors, I know that that gets reviewed over and over and tweaked. And, you know, prices go up and prices come down. But, you know, it, there may be something else that you can do to make living here a little bit more affordable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Greg Davidson, like to speak also on Agenda Item 8A, the referendum.
I'm Greg Davidson. I live at 323 South Main Street. And I also want to talk about the referendum item. First, thank the board for having the listening session at the Kickback Cafe and all the information I gathered from the discussion there. And after I left there, I was thinking about the aspect of it where we build single-family homes in the village. It ends up costing more in services than we get in taxes for the single-family homes. And if you build multifamily homes, well, they pay for themselves or break even. I'm not sure which it is. And in the discussion, we talked about, is there any way to make that balance or get more business in the village so that we get a tax-neutral situation? And what I heard is some options, you know, we could annex stuff. But what I didn't hear was a plan. And what I think needs to happen is that we have a long-term plan for how we control the situation. So we're not basically having the current homeowners subsidizing new construction. The builders are making money, the new homeowners are getting a nice house. And everybody who's been living here is paying part of the cost of that. And it just doesn't seem right. And I don't think just having ideas or options is enough. I think we need to develop a plan for how we better balance things. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Seeing none. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $500,699.55. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Tom. Questions, comments? Lynn.
So I have sort of a question slash comment. And I'm going to put Chief on the spot here for a second. Sorry, I didn't give you a heads up on that. Item 1, 2, 5, 6, 9 is for the Axon body camera storage.
Yes.
And I'm fairly aware of this, but I don't know how much of the community is aware of this. So I thought this would give us an opportunity for you to explain how that body camera footage is stored and what that line item is accomplishing for us in terms of that footage storage.
Yeah, so, thanks for the question. The cameras and our tasers come from a company called Axon. All of that information is stored within the system that we pay for. A cloud system, very secure. I would say this is by far one of the best systems that exists for law enforcement. And I would confidently say this money is well spent. What this also allows for us is to retrieve the video, review the video, share the video as necessary with, like, our district attorney's office or defense attorneys very easily. But there's also, you know, retention schedule set up in there to automatically purge a video to help to save cost on how much it costs us for the amount of storage we need. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, how much store it? How long in the past are we storing these things? And how much, would you say, in terms of time, we're recording and storing that for requests and review and things like that?
So the, the storage is all based off state statute best practice. If it's something like a homicide, that's held forever. And it's all built into the retention schedule. If it's something as simple as officer taking a phone call to answer a few questions, there's no criminal charges, really no, many of these are not police matters. And they can't find anyone else to reach or they don't know where to go. Those ones, they could be 90 days. So, and it varies throughout that whole plethora of calls, type calls we get.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Amanda.
Yeah, this might also be for you on a different one, though. It's item 2045, the PD net notion access and licensing looks like. I just didn't know what that was.
So that's connected to our record management system and track. So we have to have that system to operate, whether it be through citations or the record management system, having access to it.
Is that an annual thing, an annual payment?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else? Okay, so roll call vote, please.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Boshin.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
And Higgins.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6, consent agenda. Items A through I on your agenda and staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Lynn and Tim. Questions, comments on these items? Lynn, please.
I just wanted to make a comment about line item C, which is the agreement that we have with UW Vet School and the services that they provide. I think this is just a really great use of, again, a partnership that saves us money and reduces some of those costs that we know we take on when we do K-9 programs or other projects. And I just really appreciate the outreach that the PD has done to find that and have a really great partnership. $5,000 for, you know, the K-9's care is really cool and a great use of a partnership.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7, ports of committees. Item for discussion and/or possible action. A ad hoc public transportation committee. One, ordinance number 24-24. An ordinance cementing section 1.15 of Village Code of Ordinances, extending the duration of the ad hoc public transportation committee. You want to speak to that? Amanda, please.
Oh, sure. I'll make the motion, too.
All right.
If you need that first before we discuss.
Please.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Martin has a pretty great memo in there. Basically, we're still working on transportation. We, we still have the grant, you know. And regardless of the financial situation of the village, we still want to do this study. We, we should evaluate what it would take to get transportation in the village. So I'm just asking for a couple more years and let's see where we are. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Okay, thank you, Ben.
I have one question.
Please.
Is your committee fully staffed at this point?
No.
So you still need members?
Oh, yes, still need members, thank you. If anybody wants to apply to be on the transportation committee, please step up. We, I don't know that we've ever been fully staffed. So do you just have to live in the village and have an interest in transportation? You don't have to have expertise even. But, you know, just a desire to, to give back and to be involved and show up. You can apply through the village website. There is a form on there that you can fill out. And, yeah, we'll take it from there. We'll be in touch then.
Anybody else? Okay, motion by Amanda, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, planning commission. One, application for certified survey map, submitted by Stephen York and Patricia A. Allen, creating a two-lot twin house. Let's say that real quick. Located at 409 and 413 Concord Drive. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason and Tim. Anything else to add, memo at least?
No, both this and the next item are, are standard kind of zero-lot line duplex. We do these often and all engineering comments have been addressed.
Great. Questions? Okay, a motion by Jason, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2, application for certified survey map, submitted by Robert J. Olson, creating a two-lot twin house located at 660 and 662 South Main. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason and Tom. Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, item finished business. Item for discussion and possible action. A, consider referendum to exceed property tax levy limit. Martin, please.
All right, so at the last meeting, we had community perceptions here. They gave a presentation on the results of the community survey. And I think there was generally unanimous consent from the board to have me go back and try to put together an option or options for the board to, to consider, to move forward with and taking in consideration the community survey results, but also, just also the operational needs as well. And then what I'm hearing from are consultants, including community perceptions, Mueller Communications, and then others as well. And so I had a pretty decently lengthy memo in, in the packet that sort of outlined a little bit of, sort of what's instructive and informative for me going through this process and, and what may be an option for the board to, to consider moving ahead with. I think, as I mentioned at the, the last meeting, the outcomes of two referendums in some nearby local governments, Fitchburg and Manona, were, I think, pretty informative for, for how to sort of put this question and put the amount together. As I mentioned, Fitchburg and, and Manona went through the exact same process, same consultants that we used. For, for Fitchburg, they had a survey results that indicated the, the amount that they ended up going for was about 47% supported in the survey. And that's exactly where the referendum ended up. So they, they thought. So they, they thought for, I guess, lack of a better word, they could sell the referendum to the community. And, and they weren't able to achieve that. Manona had a lot of support for the referendum that they went for, almost sixty percent. They had fifty eight percent support in their community survey for that amount. And from what I've heard from our consultants is they faced some headwinds with something that happened that was totally out of their control. In August, there was a really well-publicized financial issue in the Manona Grove School District, which they think ended up sort of confusing and conflating the issue for their referendum, which they lost about eight percent support. It did pass with fifty point three percent, about thirty votes. But they felt that's why they lost a lot of support from the, the survey to the ballot. So as I outlined in my memo, a couple of things, my takeaways, I guess, from this process is I don't think we should, or the village board should assume that we can sort of sell anybody on, on a referendum. If anything, the referendum education campaign is, is probably more designed just to reinforce support that's already there or to make sure that support isn't lost, keeping in mind that even with the base plan, thirty percent of the, of the respondents were probably yes. And so I think the education is, is more just to reinforce the support and hopefully try to get some of the undecideds or maybe even probably knows around to the other side. The second thing is, I think, in the context of Manona's situation, assuming the board wants to go to a referendum in April. Between here and then, there's four months and there may be any number of things that could happen that are outside of control of the village. And that we should perhaps maybe build in sort of a pessimism factor into a referendum for those sorts of things that may occur that we may not have any control over. And then I think the third thing I have here is, you know, the reality is if fifty, fifty percent of the respondents were most likely supportive of a two point three million dollar option. But again, thirty percent of that is probably yes. And then we also should recognize that thirty percent were definitely no. You know, it's almost a third of respondents were definitely no. And then another ten were, were undecided and around another fourteen, fifteen percent were, were probably no. So I think it would behoove the, the village board to acknowledge and, and respect those individuals' opinions on this as well and try to recognize that within a referendum that may be put forward. And so two things to me to, to recommend to the board. Number one was one that I think the board generally talked about at the last meeting, but that is I don't think the board should go ahead with the short term, long term, or revenue replacement options. There wasn't majority support or statistical support for, for any of those options in, in this, in the survey. And then I think given the, the really razor thin support or even possibly not support within the margin of error of the two point three million dollar base plan, I don't think that the board should go ahead with that option either. But I do think, you know, given the, all the circumstances, I think an option for the board to consider, if the board wants to move ahead with a referendum for, for April is to consider a slightly less version or option of the two point three base plan. And what I've put forward in the packet is a one point nine five million dollar referendum. And I have in the packet, there's go a couple pages, I think it, yeah, that one right there. So this one outlines what would be in a one point nine five million dollar option and what's been removed from the two point three million dollar option. And what's been removed is three full-time positions. One full-time police officer and two full-time public works slash parks crew persons. And then one part-time to full-time conversion, which was the nutrition site manager in the senior center. So what's still included there is three full-time police officers, three full-time public works, parks crew members, some funding for additional public work seasonal positions, an HR manager position, the full-time equivalent of just under two positions in the library, made up of the five different assorted part-time positions there. And then converting the two case managers from part-time to full-time in the senior center. And then some funding, some operational funding at the bottom there, which includes additional money for implementing marketed competitive salaries for current employees, ongoing library programming collections funding, and then ongoing funding for a kind of a globus stuff there, facilities maintenance, parks maintenance, information technology programs and services fees, that sort of thing, and then equipment maintenance as well. So I think as far as what that sort of does operationally, I think with the two point three million dollar option, that was really designed to get us to where we are, where we think we need to be today to provide the services that we provide at the level that we want to provide them or currently providing them. But then also give us some runway for about the next four or five years, pretty close to the end of the decade with that two point three million dollar option. This one point nine gets us maybe a year or two less than that, maybe gets us three or four years down the road for maintaining our services. But again, I think based on the community survey results, we know that most respondents aren't comfortable with funding much more beyond that. And so I think we need to be responsive to that. I think another thing to consider here too is number one, I, I don't think going much beyond this one point nine five, I think, would, would be helpful considering the community survey results and sort of the other considerations I've went over. But I also don't think we should go too much lower. I think probably the basement of this that I would consider being appropriate would be maybe around one point six. Because I think if you go any lower, you're going to be leaving quite a few of the needs of the departments off the table. And ultimately, you're going to need to revisit those needs in your next budget anyways. And so we're going to have the same conversation again, but then you're going to be doing it within the context of just passing a referendum. So I think that's going to give the appearance of being silly and being, and being confusing too. So I think if there's a thought of maybe this isn't enough or we should do for, go for something less, I think then the answer there is we should just pause and then consider what are our priorities and perhaps we need to reduce services or eliminate services first before we go to referendum. But I think if the, the goal here is to put a referendum forward that we think will be reasonably supportive, supported in the community and then also get us addressing the needs of our existing services and to try to maintain those services at their current levels in light of growth of the community. I think this one point nine five million dollar option will, will achieve that or at least somewhere around that.
Thank you, Martin. Members. Tom?
Yes, well, I spent a fair amount of time reading through the summaries on the, the comments. And some of it I took pretty, a little hard, some of it was harsh. I suppose in a survey, people don't feel necessary and need to hold back or quote anything in a, anyway. I think there is a difficulty that we're going to face in that everybody, a large number of people don't separate the capital improvement plans and the long-term funding scenarios with the operating budget that we're talking about with in relationship to that. And decisions that we make in relationship to that are influencing, I think, the outcome on this survey. I guess the, the, the biggest factor here, I guess, I think, is, is we have to look at some of our long-term planning things. And when we talk about outline, oh, things that could influence from the outside, if people say, oh, they're, they're making big steps towards doing this project or that project and so forth in the next four months, that's going to negatively influence their, the vote. And so I guess I would, I would give some thought about delaying some of the longer-term projects a little bit or at least slowing them down in the next few months until we get I personally, we, I support the idea of the, of putting it forward at a million nine fifty. I think that it's a necessary, I think that we're, I'm very proud of the job that our, our village employees do and the efficiency and the work that they put in and, and the efforts. And I think we need to be able to continue that.
Tim, and then Jason.
I feel like that our communication needs some work around this issue. You know, some of the comments, we're talking about you should be cutting costs instead. And I feel like we've taken a lot of cost-cutting initiatives over the last several years and maybe we just need to detail what some of those are so that people understand that this isn't a case of the first time we noticed we were running short on money, we just said, give us more rather than having been attacking this and, and dealing with it for a number of years as we have been. The other is, I think that for some of the positions we're requesting, we should probably do some more work to explain why. You know, why do we want more police officers? Talk about why it's important to have two police officers per vehicle and how that improves policing from a community policing standpoint. Increases police officer accountability, improves the quality of the interactions and often is cited to prevent situations getting out of hand. In the library, we're looking for additional positions. What, what would a patron of the library see that was different because we had these positions filled? So that would be my thought.
Jason?
So I just want to say I support a one point nine five million dollar appeal for referendum. I think it kind of meets the middle. The, the, the education piece, it's disappointing that municipal financing is so complicated that folks get lost all of the time. In fact, I spent the first number of months here trying to figure out how it all works and CIP being a different budget and the levy limits for municipal financing and the fact that if we weren't growing, we'd be in even wor, in, in even worse situation because that is what allows us to cover simple inflation. I think the idea of cutting costs is an easy knee-jerk reaction. However, what that really means is reducing or eliminating services that I don't think the people in the community want. And so before we, I know Martin mentioned that could be something we'd consider. I would rather have that be the last resort of anything because of the negative impact I think that will have on what residents typical way of life, so.
Amanda, then Carleen.
I'll just start off by saying I, I like the, the one point nine five million idea because it does take into account the fact that people are hurting. I think we all recognize that, that and, and so, you know, how do you balance that with needs of a growing community? I agree with Tim that communication is really important. I think a lot of people that have suggested wasteful spending or, or anything like that want, wants things for, they don't want spending on non-essential services. Well, if you're a person who doesn't use the library, for example, you don't see that as an essential service. But I feel like a majority of people in the village do use it. And so we have, we have to weigh those, right? Senior center, if you're not a senior, you probably don't use it, but though that provides essential services for our seniors. And someday you're going to be a senior, so you know, like, these are, you know, it's, it's about perspective. So I feel like, like with better communication, you know, those types of things can be explained. And the reason I'm supporting this mainly is because this problem isn't going to get any better. And the longer we wait to get something, it's just going to be that much more further down the road. So something's better than nothing and I appreciate it, the paring down of what we have, but I feel like we have to do something.
Good. Carleen?
I echo most of what has been said. I appreciate the work that it took by, by all departments and Martin to pare things down. I would not go any further than this simply because it would mean that we would have to go back and ask for more money sooner. And also because we would have to pair it with cutting services. I'm going to put on my soapbox hat where I say once again, this is a legislative issue where revenue sharing and the formula for revenue sharing has been broken for a long time and needs to be addressed. We, like many other municipal governments and school districts, are being forced into this situation, not because we are big spenders, we are very frugal and very contemplative about how we spend money. We need our legislature to respond. So communities like ours and other communities are not being forced into this situation multiple times. And as a former educator, I keep up with how many school, you know, public school referendums and they're in the multiple hundreds. And it's, it really puts a burden on taxpayers. I get that. We're all taxpayers sitting up here and we have legislators who work for us, whom we elect. And we need to be talking to them about fixing this system so that we're not in this situation again and again.
Lynn, please.
So as with everyone, echo, echo, echo. The first thing I want to say though is that, you know, we look at the number of things that are getting removed. Those are people who do a lot of work. And so I first want to acknowledge to the departments, you know, I know that you're not necessarily willingly giving up these people, but the fact that you're allowing us to make some changes to the things that you have desperately asked us for. It should be commendable that you're willing to make some adjustments. I also think that, I, I also felt like the comments were, were really fascinating to me because there weren't comments on the facilities and the services that we're providing, which I think is great, right? We're not hearing comments like, I don't like the library or I don't feel safe in this community because none of those things really came to fruition. And I think that that should be really acknowledged because in a community survey, when people can really weigh in on whether their snowplow comes by or their library gives enough services, that wasn't what was echoed here. And I think that that's really commendable. I think ultimately it's laying at the feet of this board, which is interesting, right? I love this board. I love the work that this board does, but it is very clear to me that the community does not necessarily share that love. And I think that that's kind of on us to take some responsibility for and figure out what we can do better to communicate, similar to what Tim said, and educate so that it isn't just us feeling like we're making frugal decisions, but that we can actually show some of that, that deliberation and consideration. That happens a lot behind the scenes, right? It's just really hard to show that. And so in more of a productive comment, I would love to see if Mueller could meet with us or give us some recommendations as a board for how we can better support this conversation because clearly our departments are doing a wonderful job at showing the community about how important it is that they are getting the things they need. It's really coming more to, to the board. And I think we can acknowledge that and say, you know, thank you to the community for bringing that to our attention. And then what do we do with that? How can we take that criticism and, and really learn from the community about what we need to do better to communicate what, what it is that we do? So that would just be my suggestion, or ask if that's possible.
Anyone else? Amanda?
This is more of a question and then a comment. I'm wondering about, like, for example, this is just an example, don't it? But like, you know, we just got a check for, back from the government for the geothermal and the library. And I'm anticipating comments from people like, well, why don't you just take that and put it towards what we asked for in the referendum? So I wonder if you could speak to that as to what's gonna be done with that money? I don't know if, yeah.
Yeah, I can answer that really quick. So, and Jennifer, help me if I phrase this wrong. But there, there's an MOU with the library board. And right now, those funds are going to be used to offset debt payments for the debt service for the library. Now, I'll just say, Jennifer and I have talked internally about maybe the library board and village board may wanna consider instead that some of those funds may be invested in other sustainable projects that could also produce more of that money coming back. And of course, we have other projects that are coming up that could employ some of those sustainable features. And we could use those funds to sort of kinda regenerate them again and again in that manner. So, but right now, the agreement on the books is that will be used for debt service payments over the, the lifetime of that debt. But I think there's some other ways that we could potentially use those funds as well. Future conversations to be had.
All right, it sounds like we have a general consensus of the 1.95 million.
Phil, could I say?
Please.
A couple things. And, and just one thing on that, too, is, and those, and by funding those debt service payments, that obviously reduces the property tax impact of those costs. Because otherwise, they would be covered by property taxes. I'll just say, I, I wanna make a couple of quick comments on some of the, the comments that were made by the village board. So just to, to Tom, to Tom's point. Capital items do have an effect on, on property taxes, right? So capital projects are not, it's sort of a separate process, right? From the operational needs, we can go and get more property taxes to cover debt service for, for capital projects. So there's sort of a distinction there. That's, that's sort of challenging for, for people to understand if they're not paying attention. But you're absolutely correct in that they do have an effect on property taxes, though, because that debt service goes up, right? Because we have to cover it through those taxes. So yes, if, if there's a concern or a desire to try to control or mitigate growth in property taxes, there's a good place right there to try to, to try to do that. As far as the, I guess, just sort of comments on, I guess, the comment analysis and just overall process and communications. I know, talking with community perceptions and Mueller, they, they generally sort of shy away from giving the comment analysis because they think it's sort of. People sort of take it for more value than what it maybe actually is providing. So I guess maybe a little pep talk on this, on this is just, you know. We, it shouldn't be disregarded, obviously, these comments shouldn't be disregarded. But I also don't think it should let the board, I, I don't think the board should get hung up on them either. So remember, there, this is a portion of a portion of a portion of, of your residents, of your constituents. Obviously, eighty percent of the population didn't respond to the survey, right? So take that for what it, you will. And with the base plan, the 2.3 million dollar option, keep in mind that we just started this process literally in May, right? That was when we decided that we were gonna do this. And we had to leave time for a survey. So there was about two months there where we had to carve out from May to December to have the survey. And so between May and basically August, we had to basically do this entire process. And so only really having, what, four months, three, four months of notice? And you still got fifty percent of respondents saying, sure, I'd support a 2.3 million dollar base option. So I think, take credit for that, too. You know, see the, the, that side of things and that we just initiated this process months ago. Very little communication, right? We put out the needs assessment, we did what we could. But even with that, we got fifty percent on the base plan right out of the gate. So be proud of that. And I think that says a lot, too, of our constituency and, and being able to, to understand that and to respond in the way that they did in the community survey. So, and I guess building off of that, and this is the next item on the agenda, is just the referendum education process. So now, now we actually have, assuming we move forward here, we're going to have something specific that we're going to be educating people on. Before, in the survey, we had pretty much everything in there, right? And so it's very hard to explain every single thing from the base plan all the way up to the long-term plan, plus the revenue replacement option that we added in there as well. And so now we're gonna have much more focused proposal to the public. And, you know, the next agenda item sort of addresses a very robust sort of attempt at educating the public about why the board is seeking this funding. So I guess just a, a couple of things I just wanted to share some thoughts with, based on your comments there.
Additional comments from the board?
You motion?
Well, you mean a motion or just a direction on this?
Yeah, a motion's fine, or unanimous consent is, is fine, too. But what we're really seeking here is, so in order to actually have a referendum, we have to have a resolution passed by the board. And the resolution will have what it has to have required by state law. But the most important thing in there is the actual referendum question. Now, that question is also set by state law. And there are numbers and percentages, and then there, an explanation of what it is that has to be included in that question. So we'll, we have to put that together. So what we're looking for is direction from the board to prepare that resolution for presentation to the board at the January sixth meeting. And presumably, if supported to do it, so based upon what's been presented here.
Yeah, so.
I'll move that.
Okay. And seconded by Jason, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Let's see here. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action. A possible referendum at public education campaign services with muted communications in the amount not to exceed $52,963. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Carleen and Jason, questions, comments? Will, will this include them, you know, appearing before the board at some point for questions or?
They certainly can, yeah.
To Lynn's point, I should.
Yeah, and I guess to that, to that point, you know, I took your comment as sort of twofold. Number one is, there's this project, right, that we're having them do with this referendum. But I sort of took your comment as larger. You know, perhaps using Mueller as sort of like a public relations consultant for, just in general, for things that the village does. Which might be an option to, to consider and maybe a good conversation with them and the board at some point. But as far as the, sort of the referendum education, they obviously have a full layout of things here in, in the packet. But again, this is sort of much, the much more focused effort on, on community education. Number one, they'll assist us with putting together this resolution. And very specifically, they'll help us with the wording of the purpose. So what are we going to, what are we saying in the question that this amount is for? And sort of interesting, the four communities in Dane County that went to municipal referendum, the three that passed were, had purposes that were very general, sort of broad. And they all passed. And the Fitchburg one was interesting, much more detailed and failed. So there's maybe some thought process there to how we put that together and they'll assist us with that. And then obviously, as I sort of have listed out here, they'll do quite a bit of stuff for us. Three direct mailers to residences on the referendum. They'll generate all of the content in terms of graphics, posters, displays, that sort of thing. They'll put together PowerPoint presentation that we'll use for community meetings. They'll help us organize and arrange informational sessions with the community and presentations to community groups. They'll generate website content for us, social media content. They'll do social media paid advertisements for us. They will put together a video ad for us that we can put on our website, social media, share it with other entities, OCA Media, that sort of thing. Email, text, newsletter content, et cetera. They'll do news releases for us, they will also do media pitches. So they'll reach out to different media to try to get interviews, different news stories created for, related to the referendum. And then they'll do a letter to the editor as well. So that's sort of what we're looking at here. Yeah, if there's anything else that the board might be interested in doing, or adding, or including, or not doing, certainly welcome to, to do that as well. This is actually, this item is sort of presenting a scope. But there'll actually be a contract administratively, you know, approved by the board later on. So if there is something that the board feels important to include or not include, you can definitely put that forward.
Carleen.
I'm just looking at that list and, and the PowerPoint presentations by village officers. I mean, I'm just thinking of school district things and other things where we've, where there have been those kinds of, of presentations by school staff. But I look at the timeline and I don't see those listed anywhere, like when they would happen. So I'm kinda curious about that. I guess I'd like to see the timeline a little flesh, more fleshed out besides things that are social media and website-related, to things that are, that are more person-to-person. Because I, I agree completely with Lynn that, you know, we're, we need to be the salespeople on this and the ones out there making the pitch for it. And I, I think along with their letter to the editor, we need to be talking to people who, who enjoy the services that are provided by our village and, and who are supportive of this and asking them, and we as board members can do those kinds of things with talking points that are provided. And, but also with humanizing it. You know, how are people who live in this village experiencing the services here? And why are they enjoying living here? And why did they, for new residents in particular, why did they choose to move here? So I like this and I think that there are some things that are not fleshed out about it that I would like to know more about.
Yeah, I also wanted to see just a little bit more detail, specifically like in March, when it says information sessions held. Candy probably knows this off the top of your head, but when absentee ballots go out, having those information sessions prior to that date, I think is so important because a lot of our community votes early, which is awesome. And so I just wanna make sure that people have all of the information prior to that date. And then, yeah, just to piggyback off of your interpretation of my comment, Martin, I think what I'm looking for is, you know, and, and I will speak for myself here because I really don't wanna speak for the other members of this board. But I think we've done a lot of work asking other people to help us with this. And I'm ready for someone to tell me what I should do. What, what Mueller would suggest I, as a board member, should produce as far as data or visuals or whatever. Like, we've asked our departments to provide all of this. And clearly, the board needs to do a little bit of that as well. We have the village outreach program, which does not have a spring schedule set yet. And so as the village outreach coordinator, getting some suggestions from them would be really nice to making sure that we're creating some events this spring that they think would be impactful. I just wonder if they could give us some advisement specific to us as a board, rather than just the general community, what we could do to move the needle a little.
Amanda?
Yeah, I also saw on here, you know, the video ad creation and videographers and, you know, doing all that. And of course, I'm thinking, we have OCA Media, just saying we could throw it out there in case they wanted to use the local, you know.
Yeah, we did talk about that and they said if, if OCA Media is willing, then you can lob 2,400 bucks off of, off of that cost there.
Excellent.
I don't think they'd do it for free.
Right.
Twenty-four, twenty-three ninety-nine. They have a vested interest. I'm sorry, anyone else? Tom?
I guess, wanna thank Martin for the pep talk. I honestly needed it, I need it, I'd continue to need it. You know, I, I think the work that Lynn has done with the outreach program and, and the, the contacts we made is, was unprecedented in other, other boards and in other communities. That you just don't see, you know, putting up a table and the, come and talk to us about, about the village. And, you know, we, yes, we talked to all six people who showed up at some of the sessions. But, you know, I, I liken the session that Martin did at the senior center. I mean, they packed the room, you know. And, you know, there's an audience there and they, those people vote and they, they have a big vested interest in it. And when then you get comments about fixed incomes, that's an awful lot of the people that are gonna be making those comments. So looking at the senior center as a, a communication distribution point might be a really big factor in, in helping develop positive attitudes towards this referendum.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Carleen, seconded by Jason. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, nine B, 2025 operating referendum analysis professional services with elders and associates in the amount of not to exceed 2,500. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason? I'll second that. We had a clear explanation of this in the packet. And did you have anything you wanted to add, Martin?
Yeah, this is, again, we're into the referendum. So elders will do two things here for us. Number one, they're gonna help with putting the question together. So as I mentioned in the question, there are numbers and percentages that we have to plug into the statutory language. And because we're doing a early referendum, an April referendum, we have to make a lot of estimates about some of those numbers because we won't have any of those numbers until, you know, August, September, October, usually when we're doing the budget. And so the Wisconsin Department of Revenue likes to have those numbers put together in a certain way and estimated in a certain way. And so elders, of course, helped many municipal clients do that. They know methodology and understand it. And so I think it would be good to use them for this. They'll also generate the property tax impacts related to this referendum that can be used in the referendum education content. So all the numbers. So all the numbers that we need for the next four months, as well as the actual question itself, they'll do that for us through this, this work here.
Any questions on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, item nine C is ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five, establishing an ad hoc senior center building committee. Want to get a motion and a second. I see Tom and Lynn. Okay. Any staff, yeah.
I can say something to it. So we've done quite a few things on this project this year. We completed the preliminary analysis work earlier in the spring with Tri-North. We proceeded with the design part of this in the summer. We brought on owner's rep and hired OPN architects in October. And they've been hard at work with village staff here in the last two months, starting with the conceptual design of the facility. And so like the library project before it and, and many other building projects, one of the things that we'd like to forward to the board is to start up an ad hoc building committee for the project and to really use the commit, this committee to be a sounding board and to give advice and constructive feedback to both the staff and the project team, very specific to the design of the facility. So we're talking about the interior and exterior architecture, the design form, materials, finishes, equipment, furniture, fixtures, decorative elements, landscaping, that sort of thing. So making sure that a committee of folks and residents are seeing the generation of this design and giving feedback before it starts to kind of get serious and go through the, the more formal design prior, or the more formal approval process with the village board. And so the, the makeup of the committee, one village board member, one planning commission member, one member of the sustainability committee, one member of the Oregon Area Council on Aging, and then three additional citizen members. And we'll also have, proposing to have the senior center director be the ex officio member, which is basically a, a member without voting rights, who also chair the body as well. And so the, the senior center director also has the ability to bring other things related to the project to the committee. And then the committee also has the ability to make recommendations to the board. Looking for any feedback or to move forward with this?
Lynn.
I have a couple of questions. Would this committee meet monthly? Do you expect, what would be the time commitment for someone who'd be interested in participating?
I think to be determined. I think it's going to be sort of dependent upon where the, where we're at in the process. And Jennifer, I don't know if you can speak to how often the design of the committee met for you.
When the library did it, there were times where we met monthly, but there was also times where we met every two weeks for a while when we were kind of trying to move things forward. So it just kind of depends on what's needed for the project.
And if someone is interested in being one of those citizen members, how would they go about doing that?
So the committee is nominated by village president, approved by village board. So it's the president's preference, but I'm sure the president would take applications like other committees.
Absolutely. Contact me or Candy, it'd be great. Did you have something else?
I, I was just going to say the times when it met like every two weeks were very limited. I didn't feel like, because I was on the library building committee. So I didn't feel like it was too frequently, you know what I mean? It was a limited time, and then it was monthly again. And sometimes we'd go a few months without meeting if there was nothing happening, so it varies.
Anybody else? Okay, a motion by Tom, second by Lynn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine D, professional services agreement between the Village of Oregon and Total Rewards Consulting for assessment of market competitiveness of employee compensation structure in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented by Jason and Amanda. Martin?
Yeah, a couple of things. So this was a project that was budgeted for in the 2025 budget. So we, in 2022, we hired a qualified employee compensation consultant, Carlson Detman. This is Carlson Detman. They've just rebranded to Total Rewards Consulting, so it's the same firm. They developed a new employee compensation structure for us in '22. And this is employing the same structure, but they're going to look at the market to ensure that the structure remains competitive for our positions. So it's not as an involved process as, as the last time that we did this. We're not creating a whole new structure. We're just making sure that we're keeping up with the market. So we'll do this project in the first part of the year. And then what's generated out of it, we can take in for consideration in the 2026 budget.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion by Jason, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, water utility rate study services with elders and associates in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim. And someone want to jump in on this one?
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things. So again, this is another one, project that we budgeted for in the 2025 budget. We had a couple of presentations on this. I think back in September elders was here. And then I think the Public Works Committee had a couple of meetings too, related to some capital projects and, and how water rates and impact fees tie into that. So this work is for elders to do a study of our water rates to make sure that they are sufficient to covering our expenses in the water utility, including capital projects and debt service that we have coming up over the next couple of years. So if you went through the rate study we did a couple of years ago, you may recall that setting water rates is a little bit of an odd process, a two-step process. So the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin is actually the rate-setting entity and authority for water utilities in Wisconsin. So in order for them to consider new water rates and implement new water rates, we have to go through an application process. And that's an extensive kind of technical analysis and application process that we have to do and go through. And of course, elders is, is well-versed in that. And so that's what this is doing. They're going to actually do the work, prepare the application. And then they will come back to the board with that information for all of you to review and consider. And then you will be asked to make a decision on it. And if you go forward, it's at that point where you basically lose local control of setting your water rates. So once you approve for an application to be submitted, it goes to the PSC, and then that's their control at that point. They get to decide, they'll review it and decide what rates you actually really need. So this process is just getting the actual information and deciding what we may want to submit into that application.
Questions? Hearing none. We have a motion by, a motion by Amanda, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Oh, pardon me, opposed. Motion carries. Item nine F. Proposal to purchase a laser-ready sports field grooming machine and attachments from horse distributing for a cost not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Tom and Amanda.
I can say a couple of words about this. I'll try to make it brief because I know this is the end of a long meeting. First off, I had a lot of fun writing this memo and writing laser over and over and over again. To the points made in this meeting, I, I kind of want to make just a couple of comments. One I want to reiterate, as is written in this. This item was budgeted in 2026, but we found that we actually had leftover money to purchase it this year. So we're asking to purchase it now doing, using solely money that we already borrowed and didn't spend on equipment, that we have to spend on equipment like this this year, as well as proceeds from auction in which we take our surplus equipment that we no longer need and sell it. So this will be, if approved, we can purchase this with no impact to the budget. And actually, we'll take this machine out of the budget or out of the capital plan for two years from now. The other comment that I want to make is that this is a real investment in, in the staff time that we already have of our really phenomenal new parks manager, Eric Zwaska, who is a technical expert on this stuff. This is a chance to use some of that capital budget to make the best of his time and to reduce the amount of outside services that we have to purchase. And by investing this time and money in this machine, Eric's going to be able to keep these parks and these sports fields really well managed, both so we don't have to invest money in it long-term and so that folks are going to be excited to come and play at our facility. So it's just a little, very cool admittedly, but little machine, but it does have a lot of impacts to us.
Tim.
You mentioned that it will provide savings by taking on tasks that are currently performed by outside contractors, saving on operational costs. Can you expand on the scope of how much that savings would be?
I don't have the numbers. I would have to speak with Nick and with Eric. I'll point out that these fields are relatively new, and so we're still kind of trying to grapple with how much exactly we would be contracting out as far as are we re-grading every month, biannually? So I can certainly get you some estimates on those numbers for sure.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, report of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only. No action by the village board will be taken. See reports in the meeting packet. A village administrator report, including report on closing and sale of 249 267 North Main Street.
So two things, two things I'll highlight here. Just one I want to speak to really quick. I know Tom had brought it up a couple of meetings ago about the traffic study out here on Highway CC and Jefferson Street. We will have the traffic engineering consultant at the next meeting. They're able to attend the January 6th meeting to, to speak to that study. And yes, so a couple of weeks ago, we were able to close on the sale of 249 267 North Main Street to North Point Development or one of their LLCs. They pay, so they, they were able to meet all of the conditions and contingencies in the sale agreement. And we had set up so that the closing could take place administratively, so that occurred. And the village no longer owns those properties. And I understand that the developer is looking to do site work right away. So that project will, will start getting going here pretty soon, it sounds like.
Just to clarify, we still own part of the property.
We still own the park portion.
Questions on that? Okay. Ten B, Director of Community Development report, updated on the status of the draft downtown master plan.
All right, so I know many of you attended our open house at Senior Center that was held at the end of October. And then a couple of you were at our planning commission meeting in November as well. So I'm happy to go into as little or as much detail as you wanted, but I wanted to make sure that in a board packet too, we had the information that was presented at the planning commission, which was November 7th. But that was a draft of the concepts that were shared, so those maps. And then what comes, I think, next after this memo is all the data that was presented at that meeting. It's not comprehensive to all the data that they've collected. Actually, just on Friday last week, I got the full draft in my email. So we'll spend some time reviewing that this week and then get that in the planning commission packet for the January 2nd meeting, hopefully for their approval, recommendation to the village board for approval of the full plan. So, excuse me, that has a summary, more detailed summary of all of the stakeholder interviews, you know, downtown business owner sessions, neighborhood sessions, all of the interactions they have with neighbors, in addition to a lot of the best practices and the data that they have access to through a service called Placer, that's place-based information, where people are coming from, how much time they're spending downtown, some of their demographics, things like that. So if you'd like, I can go through all of the slides and concepts. I know a lot of you have already seen these, but happy to take any questions. But just wanted to give you an update on the schedule. So hopefully, January 2nd, planning commission will be recommending approval to the board. And then I would imagine we'll have this on the January 21st board meeting for final review. And we'll have the consultants come to, to do a full, their whole spiel and presentation and be able to take questions from you all. But I think overall, it's been a, a good process, a lot of robust outreach and feedback. And I think they, they did a good job being comprehensive and getting a lot of that feedback from folks and hopefully giving us some really tangible, actionable items to move forward on, on right of these different sites and projects.
Okay, questions for at least, Tim?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think first of all, we need another meeting with the downtown business owners. The ones I've talked to are feeling like this is happening kind of off their radar. And I think it would be wise for some of us to get together with them and just talk through some of what we have here. The second thing is, my biggest concern with this is we haven't resolved what we're doing with the fire station. And I, I don't see how we can do anything downtown until we resolve that question. And I know we have the fire commission working on some space needs analysis, but it feels sort of like an elephant in the room here. And I think we have to address that in order to really move forward with this project.
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will just say, I think one thing that I think we got good feedback on was some thoughts and feelings about, you know, Old Village Hall and some of the adjacent spaces around there. And hopefully, a little bit more consensus than we felt that we had before going into this as far as people's attachment to that building, other ideas for the building. So yeah, while the fire, the future of the fire district and their building question remains, I think we have a better sense of some of those adjacent spaces to the building, what are some of our priorities and options there? As far as, you know, again, these are just concepts and plans that a lot of these properties that are shown us, the opportunity sites are privately owned too. So we're not necessarily dictating what will go there. It's more of a, like a fit analysis, what could potentially fit here? What types of uses might work well here? You know, to transition between the downtown commercial area and historic neighborhoods. So it's not necessarily dictating just because it's on the plan and we, you know, they're showing some kind of a, you know, mixed-use kind of art studio-type space in Village Hall. Doesn't mean that that's the only option, but that that, an option like that was supported by the majority of folks. I hear you.
Okay. All right, ten C is dispensed with. Ten D, Finance Director report, annual billing permits, impact fees and connection fees collected ending November of 2024. Lisa's here, questions here. And then the chief is, chief is asked to make some comments at this point.
Yes, and I'll try to keep this short, but as I'm sure many of you have seen on the news today, Abundant Life Christian School went through a tremendous tragedy. It pulled in many first responder resources and just want to make you aware that we were there as well. We sent as many as we could. And then what we did is had our other staff roaming, patrolling the schools, just trying to kind of be a presence. Hopefully, parents would see us and just feel a little bit more at ease. But it has obviously caused some phone calls and caused some concern. You know, the Mount Horeb incident wasn't too long ago either. So this is a lot to go through for our county. In case any of you feel these sort of questions, I just wanted to let you know some of the things we're doing. And please know, this is, we've put this out in different material, whether it be social media posts, our annual report, things like that. But just to cover briefly, our department does yearly training on entry, especially entry, taking down the threat and securing a perimeter and keeping, whether it's a school or a business or any area, safe until we can get additional resources there. We not only do that as our, within our department, but we do that in a consortium which involves Stoughton, Verona, Manona, McFarland and Cottage Grove. So for an example, today's incident pulled in, I would guess probably well over 20 law enforcement agencies, if not more. And I wouldn't be surprised if every one of those resources were used. So we do that, we do as realistic training as possible. We try to move around the county, but because our officers could be sent to another school in a different jurisdiction, but we also have done training within our schools here in the Village of Oregon. We also do what I would title leadership training. So that's where you're preparing your command staff to organize these sort of responses. I know I've gone to many trainings, whether it be incident command or other active threat type situations and also just emergency preparedness. So it could be something as simple as planning a parade. There is a lot of planning on the backside that we do at the police department that our community just isn't aware of. And they don't need to be, we're there. We have a lot of planning in place. We do many tabletop exercises as well. They're very beneficial because it brings to light not only how well the communication's going on between the different entities involved, but also what are the challenges with each particular location. So we work through those. We do tabletops with our school district, with our schools within the village. But then we also attend the one that is done with Fitchburg Police for Forest Edge and Brooklyn. We attend that as well because we know we're going to be there if something happens. I'm also on a school safety committee with the sheriff's office, their emergency preparedness deputy, Dane County Emergency Management, other school safety directors. And what we constantly do throughout the year is look at what other training, what other topics we can bring to this variety of attendees, whether it's law enforcement, SROs, teachers, principals, school safety directors, and then just continuing to find ways to collaborate. Because in reality, that's what, that's what happened today. They had to collaborate and work together. So I will remain on that committee, just advocating for progressive movement to keep growing. We also do monthly Oregon School District Safety Meetings. So the lieutenant and/or I sit in on these meetings, but also our SRO. And then law enforcement from Dane County Sheriff's Office and Fitchburg attend. And we work with the school district on any safety concerns and other safety measures they're putting in place. Other things, I, whenever it's available, I attend functional exercises. That's where everybody comes together, for example, at the Alliance Center. And in a large-scale emergency has just happened and now we got to work through every part of that. We have fire there, we have emergency management. It's a very stressful exercise, but it is so beneficial. So we do those. What also is included with that is crisis response from the DA's office. They'll bring in their mental health reps to start working with people that are involved in the crisis, as well as outside law enforcement agencies, emergency management, so it's very beneficial. Another thing we do is anytime we as a police department are aware of a threat in our community, even if it's not connected to the school district, we will at least communicate some sort of information to them so they're aware. If we feel it's that high of a threat level, that we have a great relationship with them, we're going to communicate that information to them. And when we have an incident like today, or even the threat thereof in another community where we believe, you know, we should just remain on high alert, like today, we will have extra units moving around, patrolling the areas, patrolling the schools. And we make sure the school knows that so that they can communicate to parents. You may see the Oregon Police Department patrolling the area. Just know they're doing this as a precaution. We don't want to make it look like, oh, there's something going on in Oregon. We just want them to know we're here and we're watching and we want them to feel safe. And then lastly, I think the most important program, and I want to thank all of you for helping us move this forward, was our school resource officer program. Yes, that SRO is present, they're in full uniform, they're ready to take on any sort of threat. However, in my opinion, and doing this for as long as I have, 22 years now, it's the intervening at our early part of this, where red flags are starting to pop up and our SRO gets involved, works with the school district, and we can hopefully intervene before it escalates to that. I'm not going to comment to the Madison incident. That is certainly for Chief Barnes to comment to. But I just wanted to, we're hearing a lot of, what does Oregon do? I don't hear them doing anything. We've put out information, but of course, you get something like this happens and you really, you know, really get you concerned. So my next move, if she's open to it, is, you know, I know that one of our trustees has an outreach program. I think I can push all the information out I want in written form, but I think having a conversation is just that much more valuable and whether it's a, and I think this needs to come from a village lens because as we saw today, that's, it's not just parents and students that are affected by it, it's the entire community. So I think approaching this from a village lens, I plan on reaching out to trustee McDaniel tomorrow to start arranging where maybe we can do some sort of meeting where parents, students, community members, business owners, whoever the case may be, can join us and ask questions and we can certainly share more information. Obviously, we can't share anything about tactics, but I think really what people want to hear is that we're doing things to prepare and constantly remain prepared and we're collaborating with partners. And that's certainly what we're doing and we want to get that out there. Sorry that stretched out so long, but there's just a lot of fear going on right now amongst the whole county and I wanted to share that.
No, we appreciate your time and comment today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements. No discussion of the body shall occur. Lynn?
Well, piggybacking off of what chief said, I did want to acknowledge, first of all, the work that you're doing is incredible and I really appreciate it, but we also have to acknowledge that you run a department of people and those people were asked to do something really hard today and be a part of something very difficult. I know a lot of the people on your department are parents themselves. And I know that when we send people and we need to have that extended presence in our school district, you're calling people in from days off or to stay on late. And I think it's just important that we acknowledge as a village board the commitment that your department has made to our community, but also area communities, because I didn't have to leave the safety of my home today and be in a difficult situation. And some of your folks did. And so I just want to extend my gratitude to the department for the work that you've done for us today in helping our families feel safe and those families at Abundant Life to feel safe as well.
Thank you.
Other board members? Department heads? Attorney? No. All right. 11B, future agenda items. This item gives village board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and possible action. Anyway, Lynn?
So sorry. Could we put on, maybe not necessarily the next one, but in a future agenda for the board to discuss spring village outreach program ideas? I tend to sort of just bring those things and shove them down your all throats. Maybe I shouldn't do that to this spring and see if we've got some ideas collectively and with Mueller potentially?
Without objection, we'll add that. Let's see, that's it? Future tenors? Okay, item 12, our businesses concluded. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.